Political officer.
Sweet, just so everybody knows, I'm gonna start recording now, so.
Presentation is off.
I don't know. Yeah, I appreciate them putting this on their site for free because this game itself is like $20. So to be able to play it for free online with other people.
It's on Nintendo, so?
No, because then there wouldn't be a physical.
Sure, yeah, you went down it.
Hey.
Hey.
Alright, hopefully we have enough VMs for people.
Pirated your place. Well, you know, I didn't feel it.
Type 3. Yeah, uh, yeah, once you, once you, once you get up here, you can, if you have a laptop, you can log into the Wi-Fi network right there. It should show up when you go scan for it, and that's the password, and then there's gonna be a website hosted right there that you can access if you're on the Wi-Fi network. And then, once you hit to that, let me know, and I'll give you some login information. And there's gonna be one other step I'm gonna have people do, just so I can see your screen, and so it gets recorded for easy access for people. Are you gonna, are you gonna, sorry, what's your name?
I'm Cameron.
Cameron Liam. Nice to meet you. Do you have a laptop at all today?
Not today.
Do you wanna borrow one of mine?
Sure.
Okay. I don't know if I have a charger.
Do you have one that's powered by type C?
I have a type C. I don't think I have one that's powerful. I can try it with what I have.
I'm saying, do you have one that has a type C?
Yeah, there's a type C.
The U R L is 75.
You okay?
Yeah, you can use it.
Okay, yeah. You might have to come over here.
I have two chargers here, so. Hopefully charge if I didn't charge my computer.
Fucking Gulag.
No, it's just. Yeah, you should be able to log into that one. It's Linux, so it's not gonna be. Okay. Let me know if you need help, because the trackpad settings are not the best, but if you probably, I imagine you can navigate to fix that.
I need a belt.
Yeah.
This one?
I'm, I'm, I run Bazza on my desktop. I love Bazza. I left, I left.
Here, here.
I didn't know that.
And then, just so I'm not getting confused, I've got student 2, 3, and 5, and Cody, are you gonna use a VM at all?
I got a what?
Are you gonna use a VM at all today?
Uh, probably not today.
Okay, then I'll, I'll lease out 4 for somebody. And then whoever's ready, I'm gonna give one of the, so you're gonna be student 4, so that it's gonna be, for everybody, just so, you know, it's lowercase student, no spaces, and then a number. That's the username, and then the password is gonna be, for student 4, who's gonna be student 4? Alright, Antonio, it's gonna be Panther. So student 4, and then Panther. And it should bump you right to a desktop like this. And then, once you're there, Ctrl, Shift, and Alt will open up this, like, menu on the side here, and you're gonna wanna click Share, and then View Only, and then it should give you a link, and you're gonna wanna give me that link, because it'll let me see your desktop.
I hit Ctrl, Shift, Alt.
Mm-hmm, and then.
Clippy clipboard, share.
And then View Only, and then you should be able to copy this, copy the link, and send it to me via Discord on, uh, so, and then I'm on the Discord server, so if anybody doesn't, if anybody needs this, I am right here.
Do you just wanna put it in the chatroom?
Uh, just, just DM me.
Okay.
Sweet, and then I will give who, uh, sorry, Coco is your name?
Coco.
Um, you'll be, I think we did, yeah, student 6, and it's gonna be Falcon is the password.
All lowercase.
Mm-hmm, all lowercase. And then Connor, whenever you're ready, there's a Wi-Fi network you can connect to, and then you can go to that website. Oh, you know what? I don't include it, that's why.
It doesn't work. Why not gonna be in class today?
No wonder. I've been like, why is people dropping the thing?
Oh, yeah, check it out, check it out. This is the game I brought to the Borzen Club. Also have these TTRPGs as well.
Where's they are?
You can actually play this open for free on their website by yourself and with other people.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't able to do this on Friday.
In the room?
Yeah.
We actually did a last InfoSec Club, and she was like, oh, that's perfect to integrate board games into the InfoSec Club. I haven't tried that one, Miro.
Miro?
I've heard of good things, it's like horror analog.
Yes.
Oh, so these two are also?
Yes, those are all separate. That one I was originally looking for them.
And once, once you're all set up, I can give you the login info.
I found the Miro that, and the Old Lady Mystery Book Club one as well.
Sweet. And then I'm just checking to see people online. Are you able to hear me? Okay, make sure I can hear you. Yep, sweet, awesome, thank you. Okay. Then I can go to.
Or check out Hulu, that's a good one to go to as well, Hulu's working half days. That's where I'm doing my battle tech campaign, and they also require chicken tenders.
They call Hyder Trips?
Yeah. And they got some good sauces going with it, too.
Where's, where's the Hulu at?
Go to the one in bottle, do not go to the one in liquid. They're, it's nice, this is their newer location, they don't have the same cooking facilities in that location. Yeah, go to the one in bottle.
Gotcha. Okay, that's probably closer.
Do you need help getting into that?
Yeah, what am I connected to? It's, I'm in, I'm in now.
You have the browser open, everything?
That's where I'm going for my battle tech.
Are you on Wi-Fi?
Not on Wi-Fi. Role playing campaign.
Oh, yeah, you'll wanna switch to.
Max right?
Yes.
They really use it like the actual role playing.
It is not left. Uh, it's gonna be proto-zoman.
It's essentially just 2v1, and 2 teams versus 1 team.
Yeah, it's, uh, the HTTP, send on some like 75, 80. I know, like, put on the same line. Gotcha. And then, are you ready to log in? Sweet, I'll give you, you're gonna be student 7. You're, yeah, student 7, and then Lemur is your password. And then, you should be able to follow along with the sharing, and you should be able to just give me the share link, and I can pull your screen up here. Uh, it's P R O T Z O A N.
No forward.
Not the best password in the world, I'm not gonna lie.
I didn't even notice the writing on all that stuff.
Oh, you're good. I should just set up the password, that seems more secure anyway.
Well, I was not expecting that to work. Oh, that's a problem.
Yes, thank you. I got you. Thank you. Oh, it's, um, Connor, it's, uh, it's, just real quick, if you press Ctrl, Shift, Alt, it's gonna be, if you click Share, and then View Only, and then it should give you this link. Yeah, you're up here, I think you're student 3?
Yes.
Yeah. I think, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to get everybody pulled up, so we can. Uh, I'll give you your, I gave student 7 away, so then you're student 8, you're gonna be, yeah, lowercase student 8, and then Giraffe is your password.
Lowercase Giraffe.
Ended the campaign very early, because I told the DM what I wanted to do, and he's like, you better roll very high. And I rolled a nat 20, and she's like, son of a bitch, you just killed him. It's like, well.
We were doing Curse of Strahd, and we had like spin-off Curse of Strahd, so like vampires, and zombies, and whatnot, werewolves, everything. And, uh, and the dude's a witch, right? You can't kill him. But I think we managed to blow him up with a train from a toy store that was flying. Mind you, this is my first time doing BND, right? And these guys are all just like, hey, this, this campaign went on for about four, five months, that's part one. We have two for Curse of Strahd.
I think I'll jump into this, and then are you still, are you able to log in?
Probably.
Alright, um, I think we're good. Yeah, I think everybody has, everybody has access to the VM? Awesome.
My friend whacked him with garlic bread, he died. He would have like 6 HP left.
What a way to go out. That's, I mean, that'd be kind of, that'd be nice, on my gravestone. Killed by garlic bread.
The garlic bread was too good.
That's what did me in.
The garlic bread was too good, was his last words.
Alright, so, um, welcome everybody to the InfoSec Club meeting. Today, we're gonna be covering Windows hardening. Windows hardening is very, it's a very loose term, it's, as Cody would say, a misnomer. It's not necessarily true, there's only so much you can do, which is what we'll be going through. What are the best practices, and what are some tools you can use to kind of lock down Windows? We'll be going through a bunch of different stuff, some different malware types, sysinternals, which is a great toolset, if you don't know what that is and you're using Windows, it is a very nice toolset to have. You know, some basic practices, and then we're gonna get into a lab, which we will, you will get 10 minutes to go through and find as many vulnerabilities as possible, and then whoever finds the most vulnerabilities will win this bag of Kit Kats. What is hardening? Like I said, a pretty generic term, but it is the process of making Windows more secure, and this applies to most computer systems, not just Windows, but Windows hardening specifically. Going through, using best practices, using good passwords would be a very, uh, hardening, so it's a very wide encompassing term in cybersecurity, and whenever I think of hardening, I think of like, you know, you're working at a steel mill, or you're working as a blacksmith, and you're, you're dipping that sword in the water and making it, the metal tougher. Which is not the best analogy in the world, but kind of what we're doing with computers. Probably wouldn't wanna do that to computers, obviously, but. So there's a bunch of different malware that you can have on a computer. This is not an all encompassing list, there's, there's even ones on here that aren't. But most common in an enterprise environment, you're gonna see ransomware, which is the bottom right here, that's WannaCry right there. What it does is it gets on your computer, it gets to your files, it encrypts your files, and then it provides you with a payment screen that says, please provide us Bitcoin. In the case of WannaCry, there actually isn't even a key to decrypt your files, it just, it just, it basically deleted them off your computer, and then charged you money for it. There's spyware, key loggers. This is software that you probably would get if you're being targeted by a group. This is, again, rare, not impossible to get otherwise, but generally, you're gonna find more of these other things, like Remote Access Trojans. This would be something that somebody would install on your computer to use in a botnet, which does show up on this list here. That would be if you, somebody, you know, if you ever hear a DDoS, and you're like, how does that even work? Well, there's a bunch of compromised computers, and a hacker group would have access to like thousands of computers, and they all say, oh, go visit this website at once, and then that website now is inaccessible by people. So, um, there's, uh, some of these are like apply further, like a rootkit could be, you could have a Remote Access Trojan that is also root-kitted, which would basically mean it just, it hides in the system files, instead of being on your computer as like, this is a program, like I have Internet Explorer open, and that's like, you know, compromised, it's like a, it would hide as like a system process, and you wouldn't be able to distinguish it from something that normally should be there. So that's what a rootkit would be. Worms, again, WannaCry was a worm, it would jump from computer to computer, it was really dangerous in that you could open it up on a network, and then it would try its best to go to another computer, and go to another computer, and go to another computer, and just, it would basically just destroy those computers. It would destroy a computer, go on to the next one, destroy it. So again, kind of a scary thing, same thing with viruses. The distinction between a worm and a virus is that a worm acts without user access or permission, and a virus is to like, it's usually embedded in a file. So the most famous example of a virus would be the I Love You virus, which was, I wanna say, early 2000s, turn of the millennium thing. It was email attachment that people would get sent, they would open it up, and it would use their computer to send emails to everybody that it knew in that contact list, and it would just spread from email inbox to email inbox. I think it was ultimately not super harmful, it didn't end up doing a lot to computers, but it was still kind of a scary thing that like, that can happen. But yeah, again, fileless malware would be like, stuff that doesn't make changes to your computer, it's very similar to a rootkit, and then, yeah, botnets and all that stuff. So that's, that's a sort of a quick rundown on malware. What are some things you can do, like off the bat? Well, updating Windows, surprisingly enough, that is pretty effective. If you have vulnerabilities in your computer, Windows Update does pretty good at covering a lot of bases.
As long as it's not disabled by the virus.
As long as the virus doesn't disable Windows Update, but if you noticed that it's disabled, then you didn't do that, then that's definitely a question for like, maybe I should reinstall Windows, because that seems not super great. Another one is Windows Defender does a pretty good job, like, for the most part, in terms of like good antivirus. If it's not added to the list, you know, it's very possible, but if you get other antivirus software, it's very much likely to like, probably have the same setlist as Windows Defender, maybe a little more, but like, not that much. So Windows Defender does a pretty good job. Another thing would be just like, you know, backing up your files, disabling legacy features, you know, don't have things enabled that you wouldn't otherwise. If you don't need a remote desktop on your Windows computer, don't have it enabled, seems like a bad idea. Or outdated versions of file sharing, like the SMB one, which we showed in a previous meeting, how you would compromise that to get full access to a computer. So again, things that you just, if you don't need them, don't use them. But yeah, generally, like, Windows is trying to be set up to be secure, off the bat, trying to. We'll, we'll see how well that actually ends up working. So, yeah, Antonio.
What if you're using Linux, would Linux still use Windows Defender, or how'd that go?
Linux, I don't really know if you use antivirus on Linux, just because it's not necessarily the same setup as Windows.
Procedures built into the kernel that are automatically checking and removing vulnerabilities to your computer. The kernel of Linux is designed to fight viruses. You can install clam-AB, but in most cases, it's not needed, because the entire operating system is made secure.
Not that it isn't completely secure. Linux is still vulnerable, but it is designed intentional from the start to be more secure on the ground up, and like, a zero trust policy for like programs on your computer. Like, obviously, if you run things as sudo and root, it's gonna be a different issue, because now you have like a web server, and that has root access, so if somebody takes control of the web server, you know, it's not invulnerable, but it's definitely designed in a better way than Windows is, where it's very willy-nilly, and not as clear-cut. Again, common sense practices here, you know, like remove accounts you're not using, make sure that if you, you know, don't need somebody to be administrator, that don't have administrator privileges, all very basic stuff.
Very important one.
It seemed, yeah, especially if you're using like a consumer version of Windows, by default, it makes you administrator, and if you're making another account, you know, it may have administrator, and then, you know, you just have an account sitting there with credentials that are different from what your account is, so, you know, just good practices, good practices, because it will be taking advantage of people if they do notice the success.
And it's less than an issue now, because now administrator doesn't even have that, doesn't even have ownership of 30% of the operating system, so.
That's true.
Yeah.
Windows is, or Microsoft is taking that off your hands, you don't have to worry about it now.
You don't even own your computer now.
What, uh, I'm completely blinking on this. So Windows Firewall is surprisingly useful at blocking a lot of stuff. As I demoed in the, when I had the laptop here, if you had Windows Firewall turned on, you, it would block people's connections to the SMB share, and you wouldn't be able to compromise Channel Blue, which is the vulnerability that a lap, that laptop had. There's other programs you can use, I have them installed on the computer, if you do use them, it's gonna kill your connection, so just don't, don't run them, because that, what they'll do is they'll shut off all connections, and then ask you, hey, do you want this to still like be enabled? Which is great if you have it on your computer, and you're trying to test and see, is my computer calling out to something that I don't know about? These are actually great tools. Safing Portmaster, if you have it installed on your Windows computer, and you can, you can then go see, it'll give you a list of all the things your computer's going and reaching out to, by IP, by client, like, it'll tell you, oh, you went to, you know, this Firefox server, whatever like that was. So you can see it at very minute detail. Simple Wall is like a more generic, but very basic, like, it'll prompt you every single time it gets a connection, and says, hey, do you wanna allow this? But yeah, you know, the basic Windows Firewall does a pretty good job, obviously, if it's disabled, not safe. The reason they, Windows made this surprisingly was because in the earlier days of the internet, when you connected your computer to the internet, there was no router, there was just your computer, and then the internet, and so, anybody could just use your IP and see, oh, there's a full Windows XP system here, and duh. There's demos of people online where if you now connect a Windows computer with no, you know, firewall between it, to the internet, you just, within seconds, you get malware installed on your computer. So. Again, misconfigurations or outdated software is often, oh, so go ahead, yeah.
Hi, did you say Microsoft made Simple Wall?
Uh, no, this is, these are all third-party, these are third-party softwares. But yeah, they're installed on the VMs, but again, if you use them, they will, they will cut your connection, so I'll have to go fix that for you, but, but yeah. Useful, Windows doesn't have a super good, again, very like easy-to-use tools, the sysinternals, which I'll get to, does provide a lot of good information, but like, generic Windows does not have a good like way to tell you what's happening behind your computer. Back to what I was saying, misconfigurations, if you have specific things enabled that you shouldn't, like old outdated features, or outdated software installed, that, you know, is significantly worse than downloading and installing malware, because eventually, it can be taken advantage by somebody, it's just sitting on your computer, could be broadcasting something on your network, you know, easy to take advantage of, like, an outdated web server, for example, like horrible, don't. You know, that's just, that's just waiting, you're just waiting for something to happen.
Especially if it's, if it has access to the public internet.
Yes. If there's no, if there's no firewall sitting between that computer and the internet, it's just a matter of time, really.
Yeah.
So sysinternals is one of the main toolsets, it's actually developed by Microsoft. It's a huge suite of tools, if you're, if you're in the, if you're in the VM, you should be able to go see, it's in the, it's gonna be in the Toolkit folder, and then sysinternals.
Community-made, Microsoft's like that, it's cool, let's take it over.
Yeah, it was, it was maybe the community, and now it's, it's now partially, I think, completely owned more, it's hosted off their website. But they have a ton of different softwares here, there's.
They bought it.
It's, it's essentially, a lot of the software that you can see, there are some equivalents to, you can go to Task Manager and see some of this stuff, so the equivalent of that will be Process Explorer, or you can have Auto Runs, which will show you all the things that start up on your computer, or registry keys that are created. There's Process Monitor, which will show you every individual thing a process is doing on your computer, a program is doing on your computer, and changing, and like, is it making, editing a new file? Is it, so you get a very big overview look of what's happening in Windows. You can even get to TCP View, which is very similar to Wireshark. It can show you, you know, where is your computer communicating with, you know, where is it going and leaving, and what do you, what information are you receiving from the internet, or other computers on your network? You can even view like how is your RAM being used specifically with these programs, and kind of see like where are things sitting in memory? How much is it using, why is it using it, stuff like that? So it's a, they're very, 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 very detailed tools. Again, the ones I wanna highlight that, that will probably be the most interesting for people during this lab is gonna be the Auto Runs, the Process Explorer, and then TCP View. The other ones are great, but those are the three that are gonna be the most useful for finding stuff. So there's, uh, there's a mouthful, the Microsoft Security Baseline is a tool provided by Microsoft, or a standard provided by Microsoft that can be applied across many different Windows versions, and it's all with the intention of a baseline level of like, this is a secure Windows system. And so, you can use these, there are tools you can get, I will show you one of them, that will automatically try to go and apply this to your computer, so it'll apply the template, and try to make all the changes in the registry and your settings to try to like match that security baseline, or at least get you really close. I was showing previously, my Wazaa server, or like any kind of SEIM that's worth a salt, will tell you if it matches the security baseline, and like how much of it do you have. So for example, I ran it on my computer, I only have 32% of the security baseline, not a very secure computer, I have a lot of settings I need to go change, and make it better, that it, that it can kind of get my score up, and get closer to that security baseline, which, if you apply this, pretty good, you're gonna make an attacker's life or malware's life way harder if your computer is properly secured to that baseline. These are some just IT tools that I would wanna show people, if you haven't used Windows at all. Wizard Tree is a great tool that lets you view what's on your disk, and like where are your, where are, like what's taking up space on your computer, and it goes and sorts, searches through your computer pretty quickly. CPU-Z and Hardware Info are great tools, if you just wanna learn about what your computer is running, what is the motherboard you're using, what is the RAM you're using, the CPU, it's great, if you're trying to be an IT professional, and you're trying to understand your computer a lot more, these are great tools. Again, all three of these tools are on the VMs themselves, so you can run them and go ahead and see what they kind of spit out for you. Well, I'll bring up again, I, Wazaa is one of these, is a kind of vulnerabilities kind of tool, it's more of a logging service, but there are, you may have heard these in some of the classes you've taken here at Bellevue College, but there's Nessus, or there's Run Zero. These will, or Open VAS, which will scan computers on your network for vulnerabilities. It'll see, oh, you're running, you know, SMB V1, or, you know, these outdated protocols, or you're running this web server, and it's, it has a CVE, it'll tell you that if it can see it, and if you install these on your computers, it can tell you where, you know, you have programs on your computer that are outdated, you need to change these, or, you know, other specific settings, like I said, like Wazaa will compare it against the Microsoft Security Baseline, there's lit. If you use these tools, it'll give you a lot of information about how your security posture looks, even on an individual machine level. I will walk through, I think, in trying to install Nessus, I think we can, I'll try to do that if people are interested, but. To antivirus materials or tools, I would still say, if you use Windows Security or Windows Defender is what, I always get them confused, they're, they're basically more or less the same thing, Microsoft changed the name of them, but it is pretty good. You don't need other malware services. The ones that I've been read online, you know, there's Malwarebytes, probably heard of that one, or Bitdefender, those are two fine, if you want a second opinion on your computer. Don't know how useful they are, can't vouch for their usefulness, but they do have different lists, and that's really all, at the end of the day, it's searching your computer for, does this file on your computer match the hash of a virus or a malware? Sometimes, with the case of Windows Security, I know that it does a little bit more work, a little more detective work, it looks in a file and sees, oh, there's some patterns here that look like a malware, or something that's taking advantage of your computer. But generally, like, if it exists to search, there's a, there's more than likely a bad actor that has known how to circumvent that, and just get behind it. So you're, it's not like, you can feel safe that like you went and ran Windows Security, and it said your computer was clean, but like, is it really? I would not trust that too much. Obviously, like, use your best judgment, if you installed something weird, and it's doing, and stuff is happening on your computer that you don't know what's happening, and Windows Defender's like, it's fine, don't worry about it. You're probably not okay. And then, this is a great tool that I recommend everybody like try out, is VirusTotal, is a website, you drag and drop files, it'll go and compare your hash against known file lists, if you're, you know, wary of a program, and you're like, I don't know what's in this, you can throw it in there, and it'll tell you like, hey, there's, this program's trying to do this, this, and this to your computer.
Malwarebytes, also, when you download, it comes with a premium edition for 15 days, and you can reinstall that as many times as you need it, so. And it's able to, it's, Malwarebytes is able to scan your computer first, like, as much as like rootkit, it has a very comprehensive scan. It takes a minute, but it's also one of the only tools I've found, that when you run the scan, if you have a virus, that tries to block it, it'll find the virus now. As long as, of course, the virus is crazy.
Yeah, as long as you don't have something installed on your computer that you really shouldn't. Key takeaways, more or less, you know, security is only as good as what you configure your computer to be. If you configure your computer well, you're gonna have a pretty good security posture. If you use tools, you can get more information about stuff that is running on your computer, and potentially find it for yourself, if you can't get an antivirus to do it. But yeah, I mean, you know, best practices is, you know, use common judgment, and if you're coming to somebody else, and they did something on a computer, if all else fails, you can reinstall Windows, and it'll be better, so. Yeah, and then we'll go ahead and get onto the lab, and everybody should have access, and I will go ahead, once everybody's kind of settled down and ready to like, I don't know, Cody and Antonio, are you guys, are you guys okay? If we start?
Yeah.
Cool, alright. I'm gonna pull up a timer. And.
Yeah, I was done, I was just showing what he asked.
Sweet, I'll full-screen this real quick. Nope. So I'm gonna reset this real quick, just so everybody's on the same. So I'm gonna reset this real quick, just so everybody's on the same page. If you're in the VM, you are going to now look for as many security vulnerabilities as possible. I would recommend that you go ahead and open up a, a like notepad or something like that and write down what you notice. And then if you can, go fix it. And then we will go ahead and compare who has gotten the most vulnerabilities. And yeah, let me know, everybody, everybody all at the VM, so good to go? Sweet, alright.
You said auto runs, TCP View and those are the third one?
And then Process Explorer is, I believe it was. And then, yeah, everybody noticed it's the, there's a folder on your desktop called Tool here and it should have sysinternals assigned there. There's also Wireshark installed on your computers as well.
Is Wiztree supposed to be corrupted?
No.
Is what supposed to be?
You can always go to their website and get the portable edition, so. That is what I had downloaded and I was hoping it would work, but I guess.
Okay, I have to do that, that's pretty cool. I, I'm applying the update to my Mac remotely.
Nice.
It's in, this is like pre, this is reboot, but I have access, I have direct access to the HDMI, through both capture card and my iPod.
Nice. That's awesome. What's the, what's the tool you're using to get the? The view of the capture card?
I'm just using GAs Streamer to open up a view.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
So Mac isn't the only device I've ever corrupted something on accidentally.
I have a Mac Mini under my desk for the sole purpose of hosting the Apple proprietary API tools locally so I can use them in other things. It's just a box that has Apple proprietary software on it that'll ask me to use it on my computer. It's my server and other stuff, I'm like, yeah, I don't got nothing for this. That's, that's just what it is.
Hey, do you hear me?
It's a piggyback. Open the bad tool file.
Hello?
You have someone in Discord asking you a question? I know where it can, I've seen it. It's in general? I know the answer, I just didn't want to answer for you.
Thank you. Cool, alright, we're at 10 minutes. Need more time?
Oh, always, but.
Alright. I didn't put too much thought into how I would go about asking people, but I guess I'll just go left to right and then you just name what you found and how many you found. So, Tonyo?
I believe I found a bad tool execution file, it was not verified, but I didn't know how to verify it. I'll look at that.
Cool, alright, well, you did find one of the vulnerabilities, so Bad Tools was one of those.
It wouldn't let me nano or switch user or sudo or VI.
Those are, those are Linux, you would have, you'd have to install WSL to get those. So those wouldn't be in. But you could do, but you could do like notepad, notepad and then the file and it could. But it's, it's in a compile executable, so you couldn't really see what it was doing. But yeah, the fact that it was supposed to like auto run when the computer starts, that's the, that's the vulnerability. And then Coco, did you find anything else?
So I have no idea what I'm doing, but, but this SBC host, that EXE, is that one of them?
Partially, there was an SBC that was running in the program files, so I would say that you kept that, I kept that as you found that one. But SBC, SBC host as itself, you'll actually see malware disguise itself as that because, I can pull it up so you guys can see what I'm talking about. SBC host is actually what Windows uses to like actually make Windows run. It's just a service, it's a service host, so it's very, it's very easy to confuse it as this is malware, but it's actually just, it's just your computer running. It's just Windows running, which is why Windows is like frowned upon and just like generally like kind of a scary thing to like run because you just don't know and Windows by itself kind of looks like it's running malware. So it's kind of hard to tell whether or not like that's actually supposed to be there. So, but yeah, you can see Service Host is running here for a bunch of different stuff. It's, it's responsible for a lot of the processes on your computer, but yes, there is a, if I go to the program files here, there's gonna be an unquoted path and then there's this service EXE, so I will count. Coco, you got two of them, or did you get, did you also get the bad tools as well?
What ones you told me?
Okay, so yeah. I, I, as I give me, I will, I'll give that one to you. And then, and then Jonah, did you find?
I found, I know I found one, I maybe found three, so the firewall is off.
Yep, that's one of them.
And memory integrity feature, I think core isolation is also off.
I, let me double check. I don't, I'm. I think, I think I'll count that one, I also, the bigger, the bigger fish to fry here would have been that Windows Security is disabled. It's just not turned on, so if you go to the virus settings here, oh, in this case it is, but I think it, Windows forces itself on, but it should have been turned off. But yeah, there was the, the memory security here and then, ooh, I gave one away, sorry. I don't necessarily count that one just because that's how you're actually getting to this. Without RDP being enabled, you can't, you wouldn't be able to get to this desktop, that's how this is being facilitated. So, but yes, I, you know what, I'll retroactively give you that one just because you don't normally want RDP enabled on your computer. So that would be considered a vulnerability, unless you intentionally did. In this case, we intentionally did it, but most times you wouldn't want. Ben, did you find anything?
I went towards the policy directions and saw that there's a couple of issues with the password policies. There's zero minimum password, passwords don't have to meet complexity requirements. For the user rights assignment, users can shut down the system, not just admin. And then policy does not audit anything, which might not necessarily be vulnerabilities, but it doesn't necessarily keep track of things that take place on the system.
Yeah, I would, I'll, I'll give you those. Those are, those are all things that would pop up if you ran Wazza on this computer. You would see, you have your minimum password, let's set it low, there's no auditing, there's none of this stuff. And so all of this stuff, if I remember correctly, is gonna be in the, if you go to group policy here, you get all these settings here. Oh, Tonyo?
Just want me to log out?
You can stay in, no, you're, you're gonna chill. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna keep doing stuff after this, but if you're ready to like head out, then yeah, you're chilling.
Okay, go away, thank you.
Another one I'd bring up, oh man, I can't remember the other tool. Ah, yes. It's not Task scheduler, it's Event Viewer, there you go. These are all the logs stored on your Windows computer. So for everything that happens, if somebody logs into your computer, if somebody, if a, if a system does something, it'll all be in here. If your computer is failing for whatever reason, for.
Yeah, if you can find it.
If you can find it through this, the very, 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 very not dated program, you'll be able to get it. Connor, did you get anything?
The only thing now is looking for Windows Update is disabled.
Yep, that was one.
Enabled just the troubleshooting Windows, the troubleshooting wizard that pulls into Windows.
That, that, so yeah, Windows Defender, Windows Update, Windows Firewall was disabled. You had a couple of group policy ones and then you found the Service Host that wasn't supposed to be there. And then Visme, did you find anything?
So I found a bad tool that was enabled on startup, so I disabled it and then I removed it from the system. The firewall was off, specifically in the insecurity, there was a C drive exclusion.
Yep, you found that one.
I ran the quick scan, it took like four seconds, I was like, that shouldn't be work, that shouldn't be happening. So I went in and I removed that and it took me like five minutes. It said nothing else, so I'm running a full scan right now. Might take a while for that to finish. I started the Windows Update Service, that was disabled. And then ran Windows Updates, probably have to restart the computer, but I didn't want to do that. And then in Apps, there was a coupon printer toolbar that was listed. And that.
I'm sure it's not supposed to be there. Yeah, I definitely don't think that's supposed to be.
Settings and then go to Apps and install Apps, it's like the first thing I saw.
Let me double check, make sure, I'm pretty sure that's not supposed to be there. You know, or, or it could be, nope, no, yeah, you got it, that wasn't supposed to be there.
And then in Network Drives, there was a weirdly named Network Drive, so I disconnected that, had some like.
Oh no, you, you, you'll want to add that back in. So, yeah, because that, I put that there, that was me. That's this right here, which we're gonna get into.
See, like it's just blue non-infect promises, I was like, huh, that's definitely not sus, normal wear. And then I saw three like, three drives that were listed, but no media was there, I tried ejecting those, but that.
I can, I can explain what those were right here, you're talking about these right here?
Yeah.
These are, because this is emulated, this is actually how it got to install Windows. So it fakes a CD drive and then it puts a CD in the computer. It's all virtual, not real, but then that's how it installs Windows. So, but yeah, and then, I'm so sorry, what was your name again?
Cameron.
Cameron, did you find anything?
Just the, yeah, the bad hood, or bad tools and server, the unverified server.
Sweet, alright. From what I heard, I think Visme got the most of it, so you got the Kit Cats, I will give that to you.
And you wouldn't want. Coupon printer toolbar.
Coupon printer toolbar is a, it's a fake registry key that was added when, in the script that I ran. There's a couple of things I'm gonna point out for folks here. One of them actually is, so like Visme brought up, you know, the C folder was excluded. So a lot of malware would just literally do that, it'll go into your antivirus program and then just say, don't scan this drive. And so then it disables the antivirus because it's not gonna scan the files, it's like, oh, you don't want it, you don't want me to. And so you'll see that a lot, so if you see this, you're like, there's a pretty good chance that you have malware installed on your computer and you didn't add that. Another one to check would be to go to the hosts file of your computer. And so if you don't know what the hosts file is, in Windows, it's gonna be under System32, drivers, Etsy, and then hosts. And this file essentially allows you to force like domain resolution. So if you were to like visit google.com, it would, you could choose where, when, you could make it go to Bing or something like that, for example. And by doing that, you would basically say, you know, where do you want it to go and then what's the thing that you want to change? And so in this case, there seems to be malware that was installed and it changes these domains to just resolve to nothing. It resolves to your, to home. So what it would do is, in this case, it would resolve to the website that I have, that is not the right one, I am getting confused now. There we go, if I were to go to. If I were to go to malware bytes here, it would not resolve. It would be like, whoop, something's wrong. And if I were to continue, it would take me to the website that's hosted here. So, but yeah, that's, a lot of malwares do that because it requires, the software requires that it knows how to communicate back to its server to get those lists. And if it can't do that, then it just dies. And so, it breaks, it'll break malware. So, there's a couple of different ways here that were included. Again, you guys found the bad tools. You found the service.exe that shouldn't have been there. There were a couple of things that didn't quite work. There's also that like, one of the big ones that I was hoping you all would find is that there's actually some software installed on here. Like there's WinRAR and there's VLC and there's Python already and 7-Zip. And if you go to these tools and we go to about, we can see, okay, so this is from 2018 and this is 18.5. So, we do... And then, 05. And then we can look. Oh, it's not going to show up immediately. But you can see that actually this software has a vulnerability in it. So, there's software here with privilege escalation, the 7-Zip. If you were to go to the file version or the versions of these softwares you can find, there's definitely some stuff that probably isn't safe. WinRAR, oh yeah, I don't need to pay for it, it's okay. But you can also see this one also had a CVE from 2018. So, again, yeah, checking the software you have installed on your computer. Somebody, it doesn't matter, you know, how well your computer was defended. If there's something vulnerable there, it's going to be there. And it just takes a program to like, oh, I know what that is and then just escalate from there. So, checking to see what versions of software you have installed. There's a couple other tools I'd like to bring to people's attention. This is something that I found pretty recently, but it is the, I'll go ahead and put this in the network share for people. Go open this up. It is this, it's a tool that you can use to automatically roll out the security baseline on Windows. And it even provides you with, ah, if it wants to load. There is just something you can just run in PowerShell that'll open up and install it on your computer. And so, I'll go ahead and I'll drop this in the network share for people. So, if you still have the network share and you didn't kill it, I can get you hooked up so you can get back to it. But if you go to this genuine tools, you should be able to see this file as I create it. Ooh, I got that. And then you can just go ahead and copy this whole thing and put it in PowerShell, which you can do by opening terminal and just pasting it in there. Oh, or not. I guess I don't have the thing that I need to make this work. There's another way to get it. I wish I could demo that, that's unfortunate. They also have some stuff. But yeah, you can basically see here that it provides you with an automated way to go ahead and scan your computer for the Windows security baseline and then go ahead and apply across your computer. It's a very, very useful tool. This is cutting edge, it's very, very, very new. So, don't think it's been around for too long, but it is a very, very, very useful tool. I had a lot of fun messing with this and there's a bunch of different rules it gives you over your computer. Again, not, I don't think, I think kind of sanctioned by Microsoft, but it's this third-party tool that's running. What else? Well, there's Nessus. I don't know if I want to demo that for people. Kind of gets to the fun part. I'm going to cut this from the internet, so hopefully y'all didn't need to access anything on these VMs. I am going to enable the testing mode.
Nessus is a pretty sweet scanner. Difference between credential and non-credential.
It doesn't look like, I did not go through the process of installing it, but there is on their website a whole guide on how to install it on Windows locally. Instead of having to like put a VM or do that, you can just install it locally.
When I tried to do it on my home computer, not my laptop, it just, it would download, it would install and then it wouldn't open that webpage. Could not get it to work, but it works fine online.
You can also do a Docker, which is another one. If you, this is another way to do it. This will work pretty machine independently. You could just do it on Windows. You could run Docker desktop and then just go ahead and pull this down. And you can do that or run a VM. And yeah, I probably could have got this set up beforehand, but yeah, it does. It gives you a little webpage, it gives you, you know, scanning tools. I'm assuming you had to use that a little bit in the hardening class?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to just go ahead and enable that testing mode. Start. All right, and then so the backgrounds to this should change to green, hopefully. And then if you try to go to... That should cut out. When it gets to where it needs to. Hopefully it goes through. I don't really want to run this stuff if it's connected to the internet. But for everybody, there is this folder called the zoo. And inside of it, you can see we have a folder called malware, which is definitely safe to install. And if you go to the binaries, you've got a lot of good options here. And so, we're going to do...
I did have vulnerability.
It does, it does, but they're all zipped up. It's okay, don't worry about it. It's safe, it's safe to install.
The payload itself a vulnerability, great.
But I've seen some crazy shit. I've seen batch files that have payloads completely encrypted into base 64 and 32-bit encryption key pass things that are then, part of the batch file is decrypts the entire payload and then downloads it from GitHub and runs it on your computer.
So, yeah, if your background's green, or even if it's not, you should not be able to connect to the internet, which is ideal because we don't want to have our malware go back to what they call C2 or Command and Control Server, which is, you know, how those remnant access trojans work. You know, how do they take control of your computer? I'd love to demo that in the future, like how does that look on the attacker side? But yeah, this should prevent that from happening. So, now we'll safely, you know, safely is definitely one word to use when running malware, the software on our computers. Something to note that this may not work as intended just because Windows does recognize that it's not running as like an actual computer. It knows that it's a virtual machine, which a lot of malware will check for this and say, oh, I'm not going to run. Because like a lot of security researchers will set up like a virtual machine to do exactly what we're doing and run the malware and see what happens so they can investigate. But the malware is smart enough to know, oh, I'm in a virtual machine. So, it's very interesting because you can do the opposite thing. Make a real machine look like a virtual machine and then malware doesn't affect you. Or there's another interesting thing too, where if you were to change your language setting on Windows to Russian, malware doesn't work. So...
I wonder why.
So, there's lots of weird little things. But yeah, we'll go ahead and test out. I'm going to test out one of these. There's some ransomware in here. Why not, why not? I don't think these are going to work because I imagine, you know, Windows, I mean, I don't have any of the things enabled that I should, so. Well, we'll try this one, why not? Oh, I think it's, you know what, I got to use the tool that they provide. Time to go read the readme. Yep, got to run the Python file. I might have two outdated in the Python file. Uh-oh.
I think it might be Python 3.
I don't think I have Python 3. It did not install it on this, oops. Yeah, it's a very current version. Let me grab that real quick. Sorry about that. They did set this up properly so that way it wouldn't just leak out. Oh, no internet access. Hmm, that's a problem. Well, you learn as you go. Let me turn that back off. Stop testing mode. And then should give us internet again. Sorry, I thought it was just sitting there, but I guess they did a proper job in making sure that you couldn't just like go to the binary and grab it and run it. It looks like it may have cut connections for people. Yeah, does anybody have any questions about Windows security or hardening or any of the tools that I kind of showed off while we're kind of waiting for?
Would we have been able, or what would we have been able to find with Wireshark?
Supposedly, the script should have made some things call out from the computer to go to some servers. But I don't know if it actually went through with working. So, I didn't have enough time to make sure that it fully went through. Oh, it's not going to... Oh, I don't have it installed. Oops. Can I, I can. There was supposed to be... Some, let me pull it up real quick, sorry. There was supposed to be some things calling out. Where is it? Yeah, that was the, there's the SBC and then there's the, somewhere in here was the coupon printer. And then there was some big files that were created in the junk data folder. And it was supposed to be this right here. Supposed to be a... Yeah, it doesn't seem like it was set to be. This is outdated, I think I changed it, but yeah. Doesn't seem like it worked like it was supposed to. But there was, the LLMNR was enabled, which is like, it's a DNS service. So, basically if I go to like, oh, it's not going to let me see. I can go scan the network and view people on the network if they have that enabled. Or I could like type in the name of your computer or like, you know, if it was student one. And then it would let me access your computer by just typing that in because it knows that your domain, your hostname can like, there's other services that use it. So, it's a whole nother thing. It basically lets you like, instead of typing an IP address to get to a computer, you just type in the name of the computer and it knows where to go. So, that's that service. That's what LLM, I'm just going to get caught up on that forever, I'm sorry. That was one of those, there's a newer one called MDNS that's used. But yeah, this is outdated and can be taken advantage of. Then you also have SMBV1, which is legacy systems you don't want it enabled. You don't have to because that can be taken advantage of. Yeah, what else was there? There and then all the, you know, the software that shouldn't have been there. And then the domains added to the hosts. All that, that was more or less what I had. So, I think we have internet access. I can get Python installed and try to unzip it for y'all. Go to... Python. Should be good. Now, the most exciting thing in the world, watching somebody install Python, but... All right.
Man, I love that. I had to turn Windows Defender off to download something. I downloaded an EXE. Windows like, I mean, using Edge, it's like, I don't, I don't think you should trust this. I'm like, keep anyway, and then it still didn't let me keep it. I'm like, well, why'd you bother to ask me then? Why ask me if you're not going to let me do it anyways?
Nice, okay.
You have a chance to say the right.
All right, so... No, oh, it is this one. And then the zoo, there you go. And it doesn't work. Come on. All right, well, I'm sorry. That's not as, I don't want to watch you guys, I don't want to have you guys watch me figure out how to fix this, but... That's unexciting. I was hoping we could run malware today. I'm sure there's other things you can go try to get installed on this computer. I can get this unzipped, maybe there's a... But yeah, that's all I had today. Oh, there's some tools I needed installed. Oops. Restart, I'll restart the terminal. It should have added itself when I installed it, but... Nope. Yeah, I'm sorry. No. That's a bummer. I'll see if I can get anything working, but yeah, anybody have any other questions? Or I'm curious, what do you guys think of this lab today?
You're really good.
I really do. I don't actually know how to see if a drive is excluded from a firewall.
Oh, yeah, I can show you. So, if you go to security, a lot of antivirus softwares have this. I don't know how to show, I don't have to demo without installing them. But if you go to, yeah, if you type in Windows security here, should take you to this. Should take you to this thing. And then if you go to the virus and threat protection section, then you should be able to just scroll down. And at the, right here, there's managed settings. This is where you're going to get a lot of the settings on Windows. Again, this is temporary because they may change it. Like Cody was saying, they're getting rid of the control panel. There's all sorts of weird stuff that Microsoft's doing. But usually if you see this disabled, that's not great. That means that Windows security is not currently scanning your computer. And then if you go to, scroll all the way to the bottom, you can see the add and removes exclusions. And then there's that C drive right there. I'm going to restart the computer, why not?
So, how much RAM did you give each one of these Windows instances?
They have eight each, I'm pretty sure. From what I remember.
Sanus drainage because of valid reasons.
Yeah, they have each had eight gigabytes, so. I think I gave each two? Let me see. Should be able to go to the task manager and view that. Yeah, they actually had four. And then, yeah, they each had eight gigabytes of RAM.
How many instances did you have on?
10.
How many did you have in there?
I can show you the full setup that was running right now. We have a domain controller, which all the computers are connected to. Nobody had access to this one. And then each of the VMs here, which everybody was accessing. And then a router to facilitate that, which is running Debian. And then this Guacamole server, which was what everybody was connecting through.
Thank you so much.
I'll see you, Jonah.
Have a good one.
You too.
You had a virtual, you had a virtualized router?
Yeah, so this is, I'm using software called LUDIS, which basically, the way that it works is I define a, I go to range configuration. So, you define this like template basically. So, I don't know if you're familiar with Docker Compose or anything of like... So, the way that they usually set it up is you write out a file and this is called YAML. And then it makes it to your spec. And so, I basically said, make a DC, make 10 Windows computers, connect those to the DC. And it does all of the work for you through a software called Ansible. So, it uses Ansible to facilitate a lot of this. But yeah, this simplifies a lot for me. So, I can just write out a file, give it to LUDIS and then it deploys it using Proxmox. That's, I know, there's like, I just gave you like... That's, I know, there's like, I just gave you like five names. Are you, are you a cybersecurity major?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, we're about to finish the IT part of this.
Nice.
I just don't have any, it never really used, at least Windows to this extent. These are third-party.
Or, what do you usually drive, like a Mac or something, or?
Oh, I do use Windows.
Oh, okay. Don't, yeah, don't mess with that.
Didn't get super into the weeds with it the longest time.
Sweet. Yeah, hopefully this, this was informative to people. I will be sharing the slides, and I'll also be sharing the, there's going to be recordings that I need to post. There's a couple of recordings that I sent from the previous meeting, so it's happy you showed up, so I'm, hopefully the club is exciting for you, so.
Yeah, 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 I'm, for the longest time, I was just thinking of finishing the IT part. Just doing IT.
Mike, go, go.
Yeah, hanging out with Evan and...
Is it generically for writing?
Yeah, Evan and John Jacobs, he's a professor.
Hmm, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't, yeah, I don't think I've seen one of his...
He's working at Fortinet for, he said 25 years.
Nice.
Talking to them, getting it does, better understanding your virtual work in cybersecurity career, it's like, do...
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of stuff you can do. So very wide-ranging field, and it's also like, technical knowledge is great, but it's also not required. So, you know, like, there are, there are options, yeah. So, there was a lot of good resources that I was sent from. When I went to this event called The B-Sides, it's called B-Side Seattle, which happened earlier this year. It's going to happen next year. So if you stick around, you may be able to go to that. We're also going to go to a competition. Anyway, that's beside the point. There was a presentation that I saw that gave, there's this framework called the NICE framework, and it kind of, because a lot of cybersecurity jobs are very generic. You're a security analyst, but like, that's not like, that could be five different things. You know, you could be this person or this person. And so it kind of broke up, like, you know, what are you good at, or what are you interested in learning more of, and then what, you know, what kind of job title are you looking for, and stuff like that. But yeah, I mean, like, if there was any advice people told me, your certs don't really matter that much. Surprisingly, a lot of the people that I talk to who work in the industry were just like, yeah, you get one or two that are recognizable, and that's it. Don't bother with anything else, because it's not going to get you a job faster than just going and talking to people. So, networking is one of those ones, and so going to those events, going to, like, a B-Sides or any kind of, like, you know, talk where you get to go talk with industry professionals is the quickest way to get an offer of a job. As opposed to, you can apply online, but a lot of those, it's just not a very good system.
Yeah, mine doesn't seem to be great for anyone.
I'm sure you've experienced part of that, so. Yeah, we're going to be going to this competition, it's called the PRCCDC. We also have this HiveStorm, which we're going to be doing later this year. HiveStorm. Last year. This is also hosted by the same people who host the PR or the CCDC. And the PRCCDC is going to be like the local one. This was an awesome competition. So we represent Bellev College, and basically, you're given access to this network, and from that network, you get like 11 machines, and then you're in control of, like, you know, making sure it's updated. So they're like Windows machines, they're Linux machines, there's like a Kubernetes cluster running and all that stuff. So, a bunch of different technologies and a wide range of things, but it's like, there's multiple different things they compete on, not only just technology, but you're like, you're supposed to do like deliverables, essentially. Like, they give you a task, you need to go like audit your network, and like, where are all the important files stored and stuff like that? Or like, you know, you have to go present to a board of directors and stuff like that. So it's a very, very fun competition. It's a two-day, two-day thing, but like, yeah, if, stick around, it's pretty fun to go join. Again, it was free for people, you don't pay money. So if you're for the college, you're there. This one's going to be here on campus, so this is, this is this fall. So, yeah, we're going to have four machines that we set up with virtual machines, and then they connect back to the CCDC's servers, and then they score us based on like, how well we defend the system. It's a blue teaming exercise, both of their, are blue teaming exercises. You are IT directors of a computer or a network, and then you're supposed to take control of it. And like, you know, do all of the, apply all the practices that I kind of brought up today with Windows and, you know, with Linux and stuff like that, so, yeah.
Okay, he said that this is a blue, this one will be a blue teaming.
This one's a blue teaming thing, and then this one is also a blue teaming thing, the CCDC. So yeah.
What was that, other most recent, what you guys did?
When you were talking about it in class yesterday.
Something about SCP was related to it.
SCP, oh, that would be the CCDC. That was the, that was the, it was the PRCCDC, which is like, because it's split up into regions. You go to, yeah, you can see here, they have a different, because it's not like all colleges competing against each other at once. It's Washington, Oregon, and Idaho, and then we were, we're competing against all those, all the colleges that participated in this. And then you go to a national competition. But we never, we didn't get that far, because we had six people out of 12 people. So we joined up people for computers, and, so yeah, we're hoping next year we'll be better prepared, and I'm trying to get, you know, of course, this lab, and so we can go through and get good at defending, and then go and compete, and hopefully have a better chance, so.
I'll be trying to sneak around. My current project for, one of my classes is to just do TryHackMe and Hacks不通, just get as far in those as I can.
We were going to go, we went through a couple of the rooms on TryHackMe, which, like, I definitely want to plan on going through more, because obviously, like, setting up these labs is a lot of work. It's nice to have something where it's just right there. There's also this VulnHub, but we'll be going through some of these, because I'm, what I'm able to do with this setup here is I can have a Kali machine running, and we can all attack the same machine at once. So, that's the idea, is we're going to be going through these TryHackMe's in future. I have been trying to be more encompassing in like, providing different disciplines than just like, you know, let's go attack, because red teaming is fun, that's the exciting part, that's the thing everybody wants to do, but like, the stuff that's going to actually make you money is learning how to blue team. So like, learning how to harden Windows, learning how to use like a CIM, like Wazza or ElkStack or something like that. All of that stuff is going to actually earn you money versus like, I know how to compromise a web server, and they're going to be like, "That's great, do you know all this other stuff?" Like laundry list, and it's like, "Ah." So, so, yeah, this is, these are fun to go through, and we will definitely be going through them, but like, yeah, that's kind of where we're at with the club, so. I'm curious, yeah, what do you, what do you think? Do you, have you?
Yeah, I think this, this exercise, this exercise today, it's definitely helping me see where, what I need to improve on.
I think what I want to say, I'm going to stop recording, because I don't actually want this. So, sorry, I'm going to, thanks for showing up, Michael. I'm going to head out of the meeting, so, hope you had a good day. All right, stop.